Second.
Motion made by Melissa Curtis, second by Jennifer Lewis-Kanagator. All those in favor signify by roll call. Melissa?
Aye.
Missy?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Candace? Candace?
I, sorry, I'm waving.
And Jill? Aye. A motion passes to start the meeting at seven forty-one, six zero.
Alright, so for this session, I just wanna dive back in and connect with everybody and make sure that we have all our questions down. Jennifer sent a detailed electronic list of questions that we are going to dive in tomorrow, so that really helps. The discussion tonight has been absolutely phenomenal. Your questions will drive making the plan better. So Barb and I just said, oh my gosh, you guys are on fire tonight, just doing awesome of asking challenging questions, but being so engaged and the community is gonna just appreciate that so much from you, so thank you. Challenging meeting tonight, when you think about the two topics and how they intertwine is very delicate and more intertwined than you guys might even know, but when I do get out there to the public, people do ask the question of if, why, you know, I think one of the biggest misconceptions out there is, if we were in distance learning, that the district saves a whole bunch of money. So why are you even considering an operating levy? So there is gonna be a lot of misconceptions about the two and how we navigate those waters will continue to be challenging. So I guess today's work session is just maybe more open-ended about either item. Just making sure that I know where everybody's at so that I can continue to build what you need me to build.
Has there been a positive discussion of EMM concerning the MOUs that we were sharing with them?
Yeah, they're very, they signed them and they're all moving forward. Barb, did you want to say anything else?
This, you unmute differently in Zoom, so I get confused. Yeah, I've had a conversation with a handful of staff, I'm gonna say, between the staff survey and the MOUs, probably twenty-plus staff that I've talked to that are asking questions about a year leave. We already have one-year leave application in and others out there. And then we had some questions about early retirement. I have two meetings tomorrow with some teacher, with a couple of different teachers. So I think in the end we'll have, you know, five or six for sure that we'll make a decision by the tenth. I do think people are waiting for us to make a decision about what we're going to do in order to make that decision. So we're gonna have to stay flexible about conversation as the year gets closer. I mean, I know ideally, we would like to say August tenth is the date, but we might have to be a little more flexible on that. I'm meeting with support staff. I had a conversation with Eric today. You know how we met beforehand, who was there? I think Jeff was there. I think Candace was maybe there for part of it. You know, they're asking for some similar options or opportunities. So kinda looking through their contracts and trying to figure out if there's something we can do for custodians or paraprofessionals that need some accommodations as well. So keeps moving forward quickly.
That's, and Barb, that's good that you've said that, that, you know, we may have to have some flexibility with that date.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, ideally, in the perfect situation, if we could have that by the tenth, then we could proceed with new hires and stuff like that. But, you know, if it takes someone, if they're kinda waiting to see how, you know, where they'd be placed, the district or something like that, then obviously that, I don't have a problem extending that date out to those people.
Yep.
Is it possible, I mean, I assume that we've had, we have some resumes, things like that of interviews that we've done over the course of the last spring, filling positions, that we start to maybe pull those out? Principals start to look at those and have them right on the pile, ready to go?
Yep. For some of the positions, yes, definitely. For some, like, one is a high school art teacher, so we need to just post that and get that out there and get some names. And if we don't have licensed applicants, are there some ready, steady subs that we have that can do some pinch hitting for us for a while? I think in the elementary, definitely, you know, some of the other areas where we've posted, we probably have some more options in hand. But the other good news that came today was Pelsby is like giving a lot more flexibility to licensure requirements. So that's going to help us a lot with those last-minute changes and adds. We won't have, you know, we'll have a lot more flexibility, which will be good.
And Barb, I just wanted to give you a shout-out for the, when you were working on those MOUs with Katie. So that is very well done about how you two were able to like work on that and kinda iron it out and get the wording right on that. So that was good. I think that'll help a lot moving forward also in the future.
Yep, I hope so. They seem to be much more open, interactive too. Yep, so we gotta keep, keep going with it. I'm sure I'll be meeting with them later on, like the sick leave bank and sick leave policy. So, I mean, Jennifer, you did a lot of work on that. I don't know if you wanna like Google in with us or something as we work on that a little bit. And I know in your questions, you had a lot of questions about sick leave bank and stuff like that. So that might be a good way to tie back in with that group too, if you're interested.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna include me and send me the link, my schedule's pretty open. I just have a couple phone calls here and there already on my calendar, but otherwise I'm flexible. Because, yeah, I had a lot of questions on everything. I even added a few more questions earlier this morning, Eric, probably after you already looked at things. Do we have a way to know how many subs that we've used previously might not be comfortable subbing this year?
We haven't sent that. Usually in early August, we send out a, hey, welcome back, you know, we're just getting ready for the year. So I'm, this week sometime, I'm sure that email will go out. So we should know soon. We can do it sooner than later, we just have a lot, a lot to do, so. But we haven't gotten a lot of feedback yet on that. We had principals asking today about the idea we talked about earlier, like, could we have a sub per building? Just as a backup and, you know, there's a pretty significant cost with that. So that might be something maybe to keep as an idea or think about. But there's a big cost associated, a bigger cost, I should say, associated with that than some of our other ideas. So it's kind of taken a side bar.
Have we had a good response from the surveys so far? A good number getting, coming in?
We had over three hundred staff reply already. And then Eric, what'd you say? Couple thousand parents?
You think they're ready for this piece of information?
Oh, no.
Bring it on.
I've been almost having a heart attack all day long. Ah, yeah, we have a good response going, really good response. Maybe a little bit too good of a response in the outdoor education. We're about up to one thousand people who have declared that they would like to be in the outdoor education setting. The good news is, the good news is, is we have fifty-five staff too, so that should work out to under twenty per class. So that part is good.
Okay, let's build some pole barns.
That's what we're looking for right now.
Hey, I do have a question. On those surveys, can families, it looks as though like one family can do three or four or five surveys. Is it, is it like limited per email or something? Or how do you know that it is just one family doing it versus maybe one family doing it five or six times to get the number for that particular thing up? That's.
That would be the area that you could skew for sure. So right now, not knowing if that data is correct. We are going to add an online registration component that we're gonna work on tomorrow. So we're gonna add, when the tenth, when the communication goes out to the families on the tenth, there's gonna be an online component and we're gonna clearly define, you know, educational settings and make sure that everybody understands what they would be signing up for, if they sign up for outdoor education. And then we're gonna clearly define online too, because those numbers are quite a bit higher than we would have felt too. So that is, yes, they, somebody could go in there and skew that, they could take that a hundred times, but.
On the staff survey, you can tell. So we could, you know, tell how many staff took it more than once. Because you could, we'll be able to sort it by their email is recorded when they take it. So most likely, we'll be able to see that, Eric, if that's the case.
My question was towards families.
So do you have the breakdown preliminary who want, so you said a thousand students want outside class? How many want to be in school and how many want to go distance learning?
As far as families go, I have that data for the most part, but it's, you know, it's preliminary. Outdoor education, one hundred seventy-one in kindergarten, one hundred eighty-two in first grade, one hundred seventy-six in second grade, one hundred sixty-five in third grade, one hundred eighty-nine in fourth grade, two oh eight in fifth grade. Online education, eighty in pre and kindergarten, so eighty between pre-K and K. And then two hundred and twenty between first and fifth grade. On online all year. One hundred seventy-five in sixth through eighth, online all year. And one hundred ninety-three in ninth through twelve. So that's why the data's okay, cuz it got us thinking bigger. But we don't know if the data is correct right now, even though the integrity of the survey was, I mean, it, you know, it delineated by grade level, so you would have had to truly go in there and, you know, wanted to skew the data. I don't, I mean, I would never fill out a survey more than twice. I don't have that kinda time, but some people might. But as far as the one pick, the other piece that we could see where it could get skewed, so what Candy brings up, I do believe it could get skewed that way. And then the other places, we feel like maybe people just want to control, you know, the, that outdoor education and maybe not have to wear a mask. Seemed like a potential, cuz most people seemed like they were comfortable sending their kids back to school. That number was high, but then, so that's why we don't get why these two numbers are high. You know, so we think it's the, you know, as we dive down, we have to dive further into the people who don't wanna wear a mask, I think, is the one place. And then like Barb said, is it daycare? There's a lot more to dive into. So that's why we need to immediately go back Monday with a specific learning plan for people as far as an online registration goes. This isn't what I expected, but I guess it's also what we had hoped for. Right now, the amount of support that I'm seeing in emails, it's kinda flipped. And so I think that choice was a big deal. I, a lot of people sit, keep saying, I bet you're slumped, you're slumped. Well, I was slumped from May to, to last week with people saying they're not gonna be here. It kinda switched and people are asking more questions about outdoor education. They're asking more questions about the choice. And so I do think that, you know, I promised Tina that we were gonna grow our, our population. I just didn't, I mean, I was only expecting two hundred for the outdoors, so this is like making me absolutely, yeah, go crazy. But like I had to tell principals today when they were getting overwhelmed, we either deal with the challenges now or we deal with them in the spring and during cuts. So when do we wanna deal with them? And we could deal with them now and make something amazing and we could be the talk of the state. Or we can like just turn our cheek and say, ah, let's not do any of that stuff. Let's just start school. You know, whatever we did last year and, and let's just hope for the best. Well, if we do that, then all of a sudden that number of losing fifty per school is up to a hundred. So we do have a good momentum going, so everything is, couldn't be going more according to plan, but it's almost going too much according to plan.
And all those times, we all sat through statistics and didn't think it was important, right?
That's it.
Well, I guess you just, I mean, so how many kids can you put in an outdoor facility?
About three fifty right now.
In one facility, you could?
Between, between the, the cool areas, I'll just call them cool areas because they're safe. They offer uniqueness. It's about in that neighborhood, you know, be about three fifty. We could put up tents and we could go under the big top at each building. But I don't really think that's what people were, were signing up for. But we could delineate that further, you know, we could, on the registration form, we can say, these are the spots, you know, in, that are, are first come, first served. And then if it's just about not wearing masks, I mean, we could put up tents and a big huge awnings. And then the buildings themselves could be the, you know, the warm area and then the outdoor facility. I mean, you know, I'm just, Linda brought up that idea today. It's not just me. I mean, we're trying to problem solve that, that great number. So, but I don't think people are just, you know, I, I think the uniqueness has to be some of the drive for the high numbers too. But I'm speculating.
Well, obviously, you'll have a better idea when it comes to registering for the court, when you, it comes to actually physically signing up for the outdoor education, right?
Yeah.
I think when people, I think when people really understand that it's year-round, it's cold, it's when it's raining, it's everything. They may have, your audience may get limited.
It's, it's got to, right? I mean, you would think. Like, like Linda said, she goes, man, I get, I get that amount of people throughout the course of the year that don't like being out in the safety zone when it's raining. She go, you know, how can that number be that high, you know, and, and she's really right, you know, I don't, I, but.
But there's a lot of people who don't want their, don't, who aren't going to support their children wearing masks.
Absolutely.
Which that, I still just, I have so many questions and it's just the, getting everything in place in, these teachers enforcing these children to wear masks and how does that happen? How do we have the teacher's lounge open at all? I, Georgia opened, they have two hundred and eighty staff people in a building that have COVID. I think that it all makes me terribly uncomfortable and I get what we need to do. And, but having our elementaries in our hybrid doesn't really look all that different than full in, you know, full in class. That skews me. If I, if I were a parent and I was thinking, oh, you're doing hybrid, it would look different. It would look much more, much different than, it's really not that much different than all day in face-to-face. So to me, it's like for us to even say we're doing a hybrid for elementary is almost misleading to parents because it's really not that different.
So I don't think we, I don't think we've centered in hybrid for elementary, are we?
Well, I think we have. I think we've said, I think we've offered both, but the reality is, it's not any different than face-to-face. I mean, you have like, what, four, five, ten less students in your class, depending on the grade level? I, I think, you know, we have to have each of the three modes. We have to be ready to do each of the three per MDE. And then how often we're in those modes is kinda more where, where we pick. So when, so the benefit of the hybrid is that it is limiting class sizes to a number at fifty percent capacity in each room. And then teachers are assigned to other groups of kids. So you, yes, you're probably only going down in some cases, five students in a room. And you're also taking away a lot of support because you have to take some of your other certified staff to put them with those groups, so. I, yeah, like, and I, I get all of that. I just feel like it's, I don't get how, in my vision, and I know it's my perspective in my world, I just don't understand how any of it, we feel is like really safe. That's my take on the whole thing, so.
Is this my point in the meeting to say I agree with you, Jill?
It's just, it hurts my head to process all of it and I know everybody has their opinions. It's just, when I talk to doctors and friends and people and about what COVID is, it's, it's, it is real. And I feel like we're going ahead and it's what everybody wants and kids, people want their kids back in school, but they want their kids back in school to have it look like it always looked. They want their kids to go to school and have fun and play and like we all do, which we all want for all kids and that's what they deserve. But that's not what it's gonna look like. And I'm just gonna lay out my feelings and that aren't, haven't changed. I think that we're not, and I say this because my husband's a teacher, but I really try to process going, who am I aside from that? And who am I as a school board member versus, you know, a wife? And I really thought about this. I'm like, are we really taking care of our teachers by putting them in this? And I worked hard to make sure I was staying self-isolated and not self-serving. I went, are we really taking care of our staff when we're having, if we have a teacher's lounge open, are we limiting the people that can go into the teacher's lounge? Can there only be three people in there at a time? Who's monitoring this congregation of people? Okay, I'm gonna stop my rant cuz I think you get my point. But like I said, I really, I really wanted to make sure I was being Jill's school board member when I had these thoughts and just going, I wanna make sure we're taking care of our people because I feel like Liz sell right now, cuz Jeff, I might start crying. I get, I'm so terrified what it will do to this community should we lose one teacher to COVID? Should we lose one school, one child to COVID? Because we're so worried about whether they get this essential education in this one year. Are we, are we missing the boats in some of that? Because they will be okay. These students will be okay if we figure out really safe ways to do everything. I know we're not reinventing the wheel or the ship or anything right now. But like I said, when I see face-to-face and I see hybrid for elementary and they really don't look any different, and who's enforcing all of this? I'm, I am done now, but I feel really strongly about this, that we're, we're looking at what we need to do, what we feel pressured to do. And I wanna make sure that as a board, we're naming what we're really doing and this is a health and safety issue. That we're, these are real people's lives that we're, we're, we are in charge of. Paras, teachers, students, all of our staff. Are we really thinking about all of the real consequence of what we're doing here? And I feel like for me, I really needed to name that tonight.
I will say that I had a really easy time with my husband deciding that we're doing distance learning for my kids this year. It was obviously an important decision. It's one we thought about, we talked about. But we made the decision and I feel good about it and I haven't second-guessed myself. It hasn't caused me any stress. It hasn't caused any sleep disruption. When it comes to decisions to make as a school board member, I have printed out every single guidance that the state has come out. I've highlighted everything. I've taken pages of notes. I put together my four pages of notes I shared with Eric, questions on our plan. I am up in the middle of the night for two or three hours at a time stressing over this and worried about what those implications might be if we have an outbreak, if we have a student or a staff get sick. How are we going to respond to that and take care of people in that situation? So it's a really hard time emotionally for me too.
I just wanna say too, that you have to think about the families that are at home and don't have a great home life, that they're maybe not getting food every day or they just don't have, like, they look forward to school and being places because that's where they have people that truly care about them. Not everyone has the best, greatest life and just to think about those kids too that are also struggling.
No, and I, Missy, I mean, Melissa, I work in social services and I get that. I, I, and it is something, and I mentioned that to someone today saying, absolutely, there, that's a real thing. And you saying that, I take that into consideration.
My husband works in child protection and he can tell you that since schools shut, mandatory reports have gone down significantly. There's a lot of things that the system's not catching and not able to help with or intervene with because schools are shut. So that is certainly something I'm aware of too.
I think from the board, we can, oh, oh, I can't hear Jennifer.
I'm not speaking anything right now.
Oh, I think the good thing about what everybody seems to be saying is there's people on all ends of it. I think the good thing is the fact that our proposal is taking care of all of those different areas. And I do hear what Jill is saying as well, that, you know, certainly at all points, I'm of course thinking about the teachers as well, but some of those teachers do want to go back. They do want to be back with the kids as well. So we have to be thinking about everybody on all the sides of this versus just making sure that we keep everybody away and safe. There are some that want that. There are some that do want to come back to school.
Sure. What are we doing for the ones that, I have paras, I have teachers talking to me. Aside from giving them a, a year off or early retirement, what are we doing for staff that can't because of health reasons or other reasons can't be in the classroom or shouldn't be? What, what are we really doing for them?
We're, I mean, we're gathering that data now and, you know, those are all part that, all that just data gathering is part of the decisions to try and match up people and get them where they need to be. I think, you know, as, as we move forward as a board and as a school district, if we could at least come to common grounds about using data to make our decisions, I feel like that's the ground that the state has set for us. And I, I feel like not you doing that, I, I don't know, is, is, is going to, you know, work well with our neighboring school districts. And so I'm all about, you know, doing everything we can within the data to keep people safe. But, you know, doing something that, you know, is less restrictive or more, I should say, more restrictive throughout a school year and is, is also scary to me because we could potentially be losing more than the fifty students and the data wouldn't be supporting that decision. And so I know that it's, our hearts want us to just keep everybody safe. But doesn't, don't we have to look at data and, and drive our decisions by data? Isn't that what, you know, that the legal responsible thing to do is right now? Because we also have the whole implication of if we choose a more restrictive and start, you know, seeing a fallout from that, what responsibility will we have to recover that? And through cuts that aren't COVID-related but are related because of decisions we made outside of data?
No, and I, I hear what you're saying regarding data. I just wanna make sure that when we have this conversation in the spring and should we lose a teacher or a student, we'll wonder. Wanna make sure that when we have this conversation in the spring and should we lose a teacher or a student, we'll wonder how much money that was actually worth. And are we willing to put that on our backs?
And I, you know, every day as a school person throughout the uh my twenty-five years in education. Um, when I wake up in the morning, I worry about the bus ride. When I, you know, get what um send students out on the recess, I worry about the the equipment. Um, when I send them home on the bus, I worry about the bus. Um, in the safety zone, I worry that everything's gonna work and no one's gonna get mad and do something with each other. I worry about people coming into the doors and and doing harm to children. We worry about that, all of us as a school system every day. And so that doesn't change, I think it, we we still worry about all those things and we continue to plan. The best we can for all those things, just like we already have plans for all those things that I just named, we have plans for. We just have a new set of um challenges that we need to come up with a plan for and that's what we're doing right now. As a, as a school system is coming up with our covid plan to best navigate these waters. But field trips every day, sending kids to write tech every day. I mean, we worry about these things and we take a huge risk every day to do all those things. And but we don't take the risk nearly freely, we take the the risk as um by by putting together very solid. Uh, safety plans, I think that's what we continue to do.
I hear what you're saying, I I understand what you're saying. I think this, my my opinion for me is this falls into a different context and then those very worthwhile worries. I I do get that. Um, I just wanna make sure that, and like I said, I am coming from me and I really thought about this as a school board member. Exclusively and going, I wanna make sure we're doing everything we can to take care of our vulnerable staff. As I'm taking care of as a staff member at my job. That we can support them in the ways that they need to be supportive, which doesn't necessarily only mean saying. You can take a leave or you can retire, I think we are better than that. And we can navigate ways to help our staff, would be my hope, whether that's whatever that is. I think I would hope for more out of us than that.
I understand what you're saying Jill, obviously this is a difficult decision because none of us signed up to make a decision like this, but. I mean, that's, we have people every day that are put in the same situation. Like, I mean, we have people that work in hospitals and we have people that. You know, that are are driving a bus every day that are all those other things and they s- and we still have to try to find a way and. And I don't, I mean, I don't know at what point. Do we do, do we say that as a school that we have to try to go back to what we can do and. And help kids and families and I don't know, it's crazy, but.
Like I said, I completely understand, I'm one school board member and I've thought long and hard and I've been stressed and thinking about this and how we're taking care of people. We, I'm not, we don't have to do this, we very likely may not. But I'm, it's not something I, I know we have worries, or as I'm a parent, we worry about our kids and our families and every single day. I just felt passionate about all of this and what we're doing to make sure that. We're doing, we always pride ourselves in doing the very best we can, taking care of our staff, taking care of our students. I just wanna name that we're actually really doing that to the best of our abilities and thinking outside of the box and how we can take care of. Um, we can take care of people who have, who have mental health concerns of being overly anxious to come into the school building.
Never at any point have we ever said, if you have mental health issues about being overly anxious. Then we'll find a place for you that you don't have to create that anxiety in your life and be over anxious that we'll find. Something else to do or.
I'm just wondering, this is like, can with with students coming on different avenues? Is this somewhere we can be creative and like I said, we don't have to do anything on that, it's just. I live in, I know how my employer is really taking care of me and I'm so proud to work where I do. I would hope that our staff can feel that proud and I understand, I'm an essential worker as well, I understand what that looks like. I just think it's important to name that we're doing everything we can.
Well Jill, obviously you feel like we're not doing everything we can, so what do you feel like we're not doing?
I think we just, I and it'll see how we move forward, I think it's just going to be if we're, how are we approaching this if people? Um, for one reason or another. Can't or shouldn't come back to school, are we looking for avenues where we can place them? And keep them employed?
I think we've talked about that extensively from the first conversation that I made it very clear at the M M. That nobody will lose their job because they're anxious to come to work or they don't feel safe to come to work. Uh, we'll, we will not put anybody in a situation that creates anxiety in their life. That if they don't wanna be teaching, then we'll find something else for them to do, if they don't want contact with people, then we find something else for them to do.
Okay, is that what we're doing Barb and Eric, is that our plan moving forward? Cause I didn't hear that Jeff, I didn't hear that Jeff, if that's what the plan is, then I missed it.
I thought that, I I thought that's been our discussion since day one that, I mean. I made it very clear to E M M that meeting we had, I said, if there's individuals that do not feel safe, that have anxiety, that.
Have medical issues, have health.
Medical conditions, family members have medical conditions, they're taking care of them, then we'll find opportunities for them, they're not gonna be in a classroom.
Okay, so Eric and Barb, is that what the plan is?
We will do everything in our power to make that happen, obviously our um, you know, after. Um, the state spoke last Thursday, we got a call from our lawyer and um was calling all our. All of uh their company who they represent, they called each of the school districts and just said. You know, ultimately, um you will do exactly what, you know, um you can do to help people. Um, but, you know, in the end, you know, there is also a need of of student need and it is our responsibility. You know, by statute to educate them and so we will have to do everything we can to educate our kids too. Um, everybody who's a resident, so we have to balance both needs. So all's all, all's I keep saying is we will continue to take the needs and we're just praying right now that they match. Uh, but if they don't match, then we dive in and we problem solve and we do whatever we can um to problem solve. I think looking at, you know, another piece of data, um, you know, Jeremiah Mack shared that tw- uh. One hundred twenty-one students have been coming, you know, to school at Eastern Education Center. And we've been able to um keep them safe, we had one essential worker. Um, uh, as a father who um a son did get um. Uh, was, did have covid, so we have went through that, we do know what it feels like to go through that. Um, but really through the whole summer, that that's the only piece of data that I know it was one person. They didn't give it to any adult, they didn't give it to any um, to any other child, so. Um, I feel like the precautions that we took this summer. Um, like couldn't have been more spot on to protect people and to protect adults. We we mitigated even when there was an essential worker's son who got that. Um, we were able to um not have that spread, I mean, so I I I. I feel like data is driving what we're doing and I feel like. Um, the practices that we put in as we would for a fire drill, as we would for. Um, you know, bus evacuation, as we would for anything that's harmful to kids. We prepare, we plan and we make sure we have the best intentions moving forward, but it is our. Statutory obligation to educate the children that are residents in this this community. And that, that is also your, you know, responsibility and and so if the governor doesn't shut down school like last time. Um, it is our responsibility to to educate them. And we could just say, alright, we're just distance learning like last time because we did it. Then we have to navigate that um and make sure that, you know, hopefully we don't lose students as far as to um going elsewhere, so there's. Oh, nothing is right now is cut or dry, black or white, everything is just problem solving, working through all these things together.
So when, when I've talked to the staff that I've talked to. I am telling them that we're prioritizing staff with medical need that have to work from home. Over people over, you know, that right now we're collecting how many students want it, how many staff want it? And somehow this has to match. So and with certified teachers, you know, they understand if there's not enough students online and we need more staff face to face. We have a dilemma, we'll have to come back and problem solve over what are we gonna do with that? What are we gonna do? So far, I think the numbers are looking really positive. That we could likely be recruiting people to go to distance learning. Which I'd rather be in that scenario than the other way where we're trying to say, hey, we need you to come back to work. I think we're gonna have some decisions to make about paras and some other areas because. The only way we kept paras engaged to the extent we did last year. Was they had a half or less of their hours and they were working in food service and other places, so. That's something that Heidi and Lana are working with me on, especially because so many of those paras are special ed paras. So they've got other considerations that they're trying to balance in with. What do we do with all these paras and and how do we keep them gainfully employed? So I hope that answers your question, right now, we're looking for those good matches, we're hoping that it's a win-win. If it can't be a win-win, then we'll have to come back and get some guidance. Because we, it's not like we have, you know, twelve F T Es to go out there and hire. And we wouldn't, we couldn't and wouldn't do that without coming back to this group. So we could potentially have some discussions down the road. But for right now, we're just trying to keep everybody optimistic and gather the data and push forward with. A good matchup between what our students need and what our staff want. Right now, we're running really strong, I mean, I I heard um. This morning when I was driving to work, seventy percent of teachers don't wanna return to work. That kinda freaked me out, you know, so I kinda came back and looked at our statistics, our statistics are really strong, we have staff that. Want to come back to work, we have staff that need special accommodations, they're calling, they're reaching out, we're gonna prioritize them to get them matched up. And then I think more to Jill's point maybe is. What can we do to make sure that the people that are here feel safe and like we're taking every precaution possible? If they're willing to come back and teach in the, in a hybrid or a face-to-face mode. With, that's where we wanna really do everything we can. Unless we have to just go all the distance learning, you know? So the whole pro- the whole process, we have to focus on, what is it, like Jeff, your question is good. Like what is it that would help staff feel safer if they need to feel safer? Coming back to work, can we do that and what what would that be? And then how do we go about making that happen?
Things that would make it more comfortable for the parent to have their student come back. Was that the same thing that was put on the teacher's surveys?
Yes. I think so, I mean, I, you know, we shared them, we kinda cross did them. So we'll have some good, you know, we'll have some good feedback from that on what we need to have in place.
Andy, I wrote down what you asked at the beginning too, is that we'll compile all the. Um, survey results from both stakeholders and make sure that uh, you know, when it closes on this Friday, that we'll get that. Um, populated for meetings next Tuesday. It's hard stuff, you guys, but I think just by sticking together, having, I I mean. Untangling tough questions, asking tough questions, going back, researching more. Um, you know, we'll do, we'll do right by people, um, as long as we stick together and and um. You know, just, it's just about problem solving really is is what we're doing. Any other thoughts? Desires for research, direction, um continue to send questions. Areas of emphasis to research, we'll do it all, we're we're. Gonna do whatever it takes to navigate this plan the most successful that we can and have everybody be proud to to be here. We will be able to keep bringing it up about weekly here, so um, committee meetings next week. And. We'll. Send, send any input or feedback that uh you have and and we'll continue to move this forward.
Eric, will you send an um updated plan document at some point? For us to take a look at?
We're gonna reconvene tomorrow on that.
Okay.
So I would think sometime by Wednesday.
Thank you.
Jennifer, one, one comment for you, um. M D H's website is not the most current, so in talking with our nurses, they get. Like updates more regularly, so they were hoping to have that website refreshed by Wednesday.
Okay.
Just, just so you kinda have a heads up, they've had, made a lot of changes over the summer and it still isn't reflected on that website yet.
Okay, I'll look for that later this week.
And I'll try to send you an alert when I get it from the district nurses if they notice that it's current.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, should we pull, oh, go ahead Jeff.
I moved to adjourn.
Motion made by Jeff Hagley, second by Jennifer Lewis Kanagator, all those in favor say aye by roll call, Melissa?
Aye.
Missy? Aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Andy?
The wrong mute button, it's not up by your picture. Sorry.
Jennifer?
Aye.
And Jill, a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-nine um passes. Six zero.